This is City of Avondale, State of Georgia, Board of Municipal Missions Work Session. It's January tenth, twenty twenty four. It is now.
Six fourteen.
Six fourteen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have an agenda before us to have a motion to adopt. That was Lisa. Do I have a second? Second, that was Mike. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First thing, a presentation, Flock Emirates. There's Mr. Flock here.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just waiting for the patient to get it. Okay, thank you. So. We have a for you tonight, a potential contract with Flock Safety for the installation of ten automatic license plate reader cameras at strategic ingress and egress points throughout the city. For those who are not familiar with the Flock system, and Robert Lacy from Flock will go over that in more detail in a second in the presentation. But Flock cameras have been installed by most municipal governments within the Atlanta metropolitan area in order to help us, help assist law enforcement agencies with locating missing persons, to help law enforcement agencies assist with the recovery of stolen vehicles, and to assist law enforcement agencies with closing cases through the provision of evidence. We are a show in the Atlanta metro area. All of our fellow cities, surrounding cities, have installed Flock cameras. And our agency has used both DeKalb County and Fulton County Flock cameras to assist with locating missing persons. So this is technology that we've used. Unfortunately, the system is is made better as it's made whole. So if you have, if you have a municipality that is not a participant in the Flock system, the ability to recover the things that I just talked about decreases if they enter into a municipality without the system. So without further ado, Mr. Ricey has prepared a very short presentation to explain this to you. The reason we're moving forward now is we have a discount opportunity if if we decide to enter into a contract before the end of the month of January. And I would like to let you guys notice that, I mean, I would like to let you guys know that this is an item that there are funds for within the two-year capital program. The funds that we have remaining from, if y'all recall, we had about sixty seven thousand dollars in unbudgeted ARPA funds that we, the federal government mandated that we program by the end of the year and spend by the end of next year. So those funds are essentially in the capital program for this potential contract.
Okay. Thank you. And everyone's been given the slides, so everyone has a presentation. Fantastic. Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Robert Lacy. As City Manager, Patrick Bryant mentioned, I'm with Flock Safety. We're an Atlanta-based company, founded about five years ago. Couple of Georgia Tech grads got together and, but they kind of not only redesigned a better camera, but redesigned a better system. And so aptly named it Flock because, as Patrick mentioned, things are better together than separately. So a flock of birds work more efficiently together, just like cameras, just like coordination of crime efforts, crime fighting, crime prevention between departments, collaboration and so forth. So license plate readers, ALPR, Y-Flock. So when you think about Flock cameras, we install the cameras on the side of the road. You point them at the back of the vehicle. We take a picture of the vehicle every time it drives by. And based on the feedback we get from the picture that we take, we do a couple of different things. The primary thing that we're doing is we're gathering a description of that vehicle. We have all the lookup tables and information that know the measurements of the vehicle plus machine learning. So we know that it's a yellow Toyota. We know that it's a black F-150 pickup truck, those types of things. Second thing we do is we take a picture of the plate, the license plate, and we run it through the National Crime Database. Ninety nine point nine 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 percent of cars that go by our cameras every single day, nothing happens because they're not in issue with the law. So their license plate or vehicle description is not in the National Crime Database, and their vehicle and their license plate is not involved in an active investigation by a police department in the area. So unless you're part of that, then the police department is not, is not notified. So that is what what Flock cameras do. Like I said, we install them on the side of the road. We have hundreds and thousands of cameras across Georgia, across the Atlanta metro area, around the country. We've been doing this for about five and a half, almost six years now, and we've become kind of the standard for what we do in the automated license plate reader space. So how does the technology work? So on slide three, that black room that looks like a football, that is the Falcon camera. So again, what the camera does is it takes still pictures of the vehicle as it drives by. We install a pole in the ground. The camera itself is wirelessly enabled, so it doesn't need any cords connected to it. So when it takes a picture, it transmits that information back to our network, and then the customer, the police department can log into there, there's never software and see all the information. The camera is powered by solar power. There's a battery inside the camera, so it's designed to be very infrastructure free and can be installed in most places. Install time usually takes about sixty to ninety days once the contract is put in place. Like I said before, we provide a lot of information. For the police department, the main thing that we provide is the license plate lookup and the vehicle description. So again, what, what, what are we doing and what are we not doing? One thing that Flock is not doing is we're not applying any facial recognition, any personal lookup. We find that staying focused on the vehicle, type of vehicle, and the license plate provides that we are focused on the things that the police department would be focused on, focused on the vehicle, not on, on the person, which reduces the, you know, the privacy concerns and those types of things. Plus, all the data that we gather. So on a weekly and monthly basis, we take more pictures and save more pictures in our system than Instagram does. But every thirty days, those pictures are erased. So unless the police department requires that they download some of those pictures based on an investigation, at the end of that thirty day period, we erase all that. So the goal is not to build a database of so-called information that could be applied later down the road. We're taking these pictures, we're applying data to it, we're running it through the National Database. We apply metrics based on investigations that are currently going on, but we're not saving it for long-term application of different things. So a lot of questions come up a lot. So what does the police department receive when a car that drives by, let's say they're involved with the law? They either get one of, they get one of two things. They receive, well, they get two things. They'll get the alert from the National Crime Database. So that means that there's an outstanding warrant for that individual. That's a plot that's associated with that vehicle. That means that vehicle could have been involved in a crime. The second thing that does is that if there is a vehicle or associated with a person that's involved in an active investigation, that police department can put in what's called a hot list. So the second thing would be, and that's called the active investigation. So the two reasons that they would receive alerts. And that, that type interoperability allows not only the advantage for Avondale State's Police Department, but it also allows different cities and counties to communicate in between each other and collaborate to help reduce crime. So on page seven, we get into the protecting privacy. It's kind of a continuation of the things that we do and don't do. All the data that's gathered is erased after thirty days. Again, the goal is to help prevent and eliminate crime. It's not designed to gather up a database and get people in trouble for things they're not doing. And so it is designed to help prevent and reduce crime. And then on pages nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, we've got some use cases. We have a use case that helped with a, with a carjacking and an abduction. And there's a timeline that basically said the alert went out at twelve thirty P M. And within six hours, the vehicle was identified, was apprehended, and the loved one was reunited with their family. So there are a variety of different ways that you can use this system. It is designed to help, like I said, reduce and eliminate crime. It's associated with the vehicle. On page ten, there's a use case that talks about a carjacking arrest. The person that was involved in the carjacking, obviously, the police department had the type of vehicle, had the license plate, and they were able to track them down, you know, three and four counties and cities away by using the Flock system. Flock does business in about forty-two states around the country, and we've got about fifty-five thousand cameras. And about eighty percent of those cameras are law enforcement cameras. So we have an incredible reach, not only within the metro Atlanta area, around the state of Georgia and the southeast, but also around the country. And we've also helped not only in nonviolent crime with carjackings and stolen vehicles and stolen property, but there was a case down in the Grange, Georgia, where we actually helped apprehend a murder suspect. And it goes into a lot of detail about things like that. So we have been an instrumental part of many departments around the city and around the metro, reducing crime. One of our longest-time customers is Cobb County Police Department. They've been using our system members five years. They've got about approximately two hundred cameras around the county. And the interesting thing about the way we do our business is not only do we sell our cameras to police departments and sheriff's offices and things like that, but we also sell cameras to human associations, civic associations. So those same cameras that are on the side of the road within the city and the county can also help protect neighborhoods and apartment complexes and condominium complexes. And the police department would have access to all those cameras. So if you think about a large county like Cobb County, the county police department has about two hundred cameras, but there are over a thousand cameras in the county. So the difference in those is the eight hundred privately funded cameras that are in neighborhoods and in front of schools and churches and apartment complexes and condominiums. So it's a great way for that public-private partnership and citizens and HOAs and civic associations and the police to work together to help reduce crime. So as you can see with that slide there on the right with the reduction of robberies and burglaries and entering autos and thefts and things like that. So lots of great statistics that go along with that. So this is really just the tip of the iceberg, but Mr. Bryant wanted me to come here and give you guys an overview of our capabilities and what we do. We look forward to doing business with the city, installing the cameras and seeing the benefit that could come from it and helping you reduce one that crime.
And, and let me speak a little bit about our experience. In October, we were alerted to a possible missing person. And we were able to tap into other agency Flock camera systems to locate that person and reunite that person with his family members within twenty-four hours. So you know, we have tangible experience where this system has provided immense benefit to the agency. What we are proposing to the board is a two-year trial contract. Essentially, two years for us to determine whether or not this system works for us. The model is subscription-based, so each camera has a three thousand dollar annual subscription. We have also been provided with a fifty percent discount in the installation of these cameras by Flock Safety if we move forward with the contract prior to the end of January. So the total two-year cost for the system would be, I believe, sixty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which is less than the budgeted amount or the amount of funds we have in the budget for this project.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just a quick couple of questions. Yeah, I'm very interested in this last page. And also, you know, not just crime reduction or catching people back, but crime prevention. So does, do these cameras, do they have a sign on them or something that says that they're a camera? How do, how do you know that it's cameras?
Signs of why or why not to have the signs. So for private residences, so in neighborhoods, apartment complexes, condominiums, kind of like the, like the security sign you'd have in the front yard. Our community silties, that's what we call it within our company, we put signs on those poles as a deterrent. Generally, when we install cameras for a city or a county for a law enforcement agency, we don't put that sign. One of the reasons is we don't want to draw attention to something because we generally put them in high-traffic areas, and it's another layer of sort of, here I am, and that sort of thing. It's, there have been instances where the sheriff's department and police department have decided we want, we want signs on a couple of the cameras as deterrents. Because we're going to tell people, here we are. But for our apartments, condominiums, churches, schools, we put those signs up and it's a layer of deterrence.
Does the crime prevention aspect, is that because people know the camera's there or?
Yes.
Okay. So then my, my other question is just, how tall are, said there on poles, how tall are the poles? And what about the vandalism issue?
I shouldn't say. Before I started on the sales team, I spent about two years helping build the network, so technician, manage all the teams. The poles are about fourteen feet tall. We bury them about two feet in the ground. So twelve feet above the ground, we put the solar panel on the top, and then about four to six inches below that, the braces for the universal mount, and then we put the camera, which is about the size of a football. So it's about that big, angled down towards the roadway. So for the average person walking down the street, they're generally going to be three to four feet, five feet off of the, off of the roadway. And if there's a sidewalk there, someone can walk by. Most of the time, ninety-eight percent of the time, there's no vandalism. Most of the time, people don't know what they are.
Yeah.
They really don't. Sometimes we get confused. Oh, are you giving us speeding tickets? Is it a weather station? People don't know what it is. They think it's a video camera as opposed to taking still pictures. Now, if someone really wanted to vandalize the camera, they could run over with their car. They could drive up with their car. They could stand on it or their car, and they could mess with the camera. Now, while they're doing that, pictures are being taken. So not to say that it doesn't happen, but it was rare.
Okay.
That there are vandalists.
If it happened, we would be responsible for the cost of replacing?
That's correct. So we have a fee schedule on replacement for day-to-day warranty, for day-to-day normal warranty on the camera. All of that's covered. But if, say, the vehicle ran over the pole, generally, there would be an accident report. There would be an insurance claim. We would provide that information to you to get reimbursed, those types of things. But there is a fee schedule to, to replace the camera. It is damaged beyond repair.
Thank you so much, Christine.
Gus? I, I have a couple of questions. I can see how these could be really helpful and like, one example that comes to mind is, you know, when a string of cars gets broken into on a street, and then you can go back and say which cars came down the street between such and such hours and try to kind of narrow that down. My, my biggest concern is is the database. And you mentioned that eighty percent of your customers are law enforcement police departments. And then the other twenty percent of things like churches and owner associations. Do, do all those customers have access to the entire database?
No.
Okay.
So the way that we divide that up is in order to have access to what's called CGIS data, which is law enforcement data, and it's a standard developed, supported by the FBI.
Right.
You have to be a sworn police officer.
Okay.
So what I like to say to our residential customers is we don't give civilians an action item. We don't alert them that someone has entered their property.
Okay.
That is a convicted felon, and there's an arrest warrant for them.
I see.
Now, the police department will receive that alert.
Okay.
That the person in charge of the program within the H O I or the apartment complex and stuff, they get historical data.
Okay.
And they can look things up.
So the alerts go through.
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
My next question, just kind of just kind of devil's advocate here, like, you know, the hits come through the National Crime Database or a hot list. How are they, is there some kind of check on that? Like inaccuracy on that hot list or an inaccuracy in the National Crime Database? Like my, my, you know, the scenario that runs through my head is, oh, somebody stole a car. They see a similar car. They steal the tag off that car. They put it on this car. And, you know, you know, worst-case scenario, you, the police pull over someone thinking they've got a stolen car or a hostile person in this car.
Every, every jurisdiction, special jurisdictions, sheriff's office, police department has policies and procedures for those types of things. So having access to N C I C requires all the training that a police officer goes through. And then there are all sorts of requirements, and you can back me up on this, that. And what we like to say is it takes quite a bit for, for an individual to come across and be in trouble with the law. It's not like you're walking down the street and, even if you get a speeding ticket.
Right.
Even if you don't pay that speeding ticket, you happen to end up in a National Crime Database. That's, that's, that's pretty serious. Now, that database, we're only as accurate as what is delivered from N C I C.
Of course.
That database is updated twice a day. It's updated at one P M and at one A M.
Okay.
So most police department sheriff's offices have policies and procedures in place where they get an alert that the vehicle is stolen and that there's an N C I C hit on that.
Right.
And backing up your chief, they're going to do a double back-to-dispatch, and they're going to verify it. They're going to add another layer.
Okay.
Because there are millions of examples, especially from larger jurisdictions to smaller jurisdictions.
Right.
City of Atlanta to Sandy Springs.
Right.
City of Atlanta to wherever. It's always small, it's always large to small.
Sure.
Where Grandma Sally had a car stolen, he just got it back.
Right.
He drives by a camera, it's still stolen because
Right.
They want to get it in there quickly, but they're not always taking it out of the system quickly.
Right.
That's, so most, everyone is trained to have another layer. So it's people, policies and technology working together. Then we've, Chief and I've had a lot of those, a lot of those conversations to make sure all that is, all that's taken care of. Great questions. You know, I've done probably twenty-five of these around the country, and they're similar question, but you guys are all on the right track.
Okay.
The questions.
Thank you. Can you give us an idea of like where these cameras are going to be placed and how they're going to be routed?
Yeah, we've got a, I did a
So I feel like, you know, this is going to be more in the commercial district, right?
No. That's right. So the design is usually to create a border strategy. So you want to know who is coming into your jurisdiction. And so it is easily in heavily trafficked areas inbound and outbound to the city. And then it's also taking into consideration other jurisdictions that border. So unincorporated areas of DeKalb County, city of Decatur, P D. So there are lots of cameras in Decatur, and I think the county police department across the county has probably a hundred fifty camera. So quite a bit of cameras. So we took that into consideration when the chief and I sat down and made decisions. And just so you know, you could install ten cameras. You can install twenty cameras or thirty cameras. There are never enough cameras for the number of streets and right turns and left turns. So based on budget, because you're always budget constrained, you prioritize where you put the cameras to make, what would make the most impact. Inbound, outbound, safety, hotspots, things like that. And so generally, we have cameras in the northern part of the city. We usually have, there's been cameras in the southern part of the city, east and west. So it's just a matter of prioritizing. And then I tell you, once you get these cameras in place and you start seeing the benefit, it's, the conversation usually is, hey, well, if you have a camera here, we need the camera here, we need the camera here. So generally, phase one is that, is that prevention, that, that border strategy. And then phase two can be more hotspots or can be more outbound versus inbound. So it's usually a combination.
And I like to say, we're not anticipating a phase two. We're not anticipating right now a phase two. What we're trying to do is cover ingress and egress points and major thoroughfares in the city, literally so that we can assist in our own investigations or other agencies in the performance of their investigations for stolen vehicles, missing persons, and persons who have committed crimes and are under active investigation for those crimes and can't be located. That is our sole purpose.
So the, the red points are the ones that we're considering right now? Is that it? Ten cameras?
Yes.
All right. Yeah. Were you done?
Yeah, I guess. So yeah, it's, it's going to primarily just, just car in nature. So say, for instance, I mean, there's a lot of foot traffic that's going to be obviously coming down there, like, it's a little bit about like, you know, if there's pedestrian traffic and a crime committed yeah, by someone on foot, you know.
Right. So our cameras are positioned where, so the average vehicle, their sedan is going to be, say, about that high. The plate is about halfway down, right in the middle. So a camera that's on a pole out here, and it's angled downward because the back of the vehicle, it's going to eliminate capturing most foot traffic. But based on where the camera is during the day, it takes pictures based on motion. So the difference between light and dark. And at night, it's an infrared beam that we, that we push out, and once that's crossed, then it takes the picture. So anything that goes in front of the camera, we will take a picture of it. Dogs, people walking in front of the camera, someone on horseback, there's a big storm and a branch falls. You know, you're going to have a picture of a branch, you know, the leaves and stuff in front of it. But having said all that, if you know you've got a camera at the intersection of this street and that street, and something happened, we don't give you the ability to search by people, but you can search by camera for a particular fixed amount of time, and you can just scroll through those pictures, and you're going to see whatever the camera took as long as it's within thirty days. So once we take a picture, the clock starts ticking. So the picture itself and all the metadata associated with location, time, all of that only lasts in the system for thirty days, and then it's erased. We don't have any control over that. So Amazon Web Services, the government public cloud hosts all of our information, and the rule is that thirty days, it gets erased. So that's the
Chief, will you, will you come up and explain your, your point of view here so we can?
Yeah, absolutely. So as Robert stated, Flock has been, is the same. I mean, a lot of companies try to reproduce it. Flock is sustainable. Their track record hands out was great. This, the idea in Avondale Estates is the investigative tool. I have firsthand experience deploying in Clarkson when I was there, when we went live with them. It's the crazy stuff that you would never think that, oh, we had a burglary, no vehicle description at all. We start looking at tags coming out of that street. Bam, there's the items visible in the, in the back of the truck, for example, that were stolen. Now we have the vehicle, now we have the tag, now we have the suspect, now we move, you know. It, it's an investigative tool. Yes, we're going to get alerts, but we are going to put policy in place. The alert itself is not probable cause to stop a vehicle. We have to find that vehicle. We have to locate that vehicle, be with that vehicle, and then we also have to additionally rerun that vehicle information through G C I C, N C I C before taking action. Because like he said, nothing's perfect in the world. So those concerns, we'll have policies in place. We will implement a lot of training on this. We have the backend software through Flock where we can search. And as Patrick said, we were able to solve that missing person, and it was actually in less than twelve hours. You know, in less than twenty, twelve hours, we had a report of a missing person. We started searching the vehicle. We had some vehicle information. Lo and behold, we, we were, he was hitting on cameras from here through Fulton, through Atlanta, out to Douglas, Douglasville, back down to the south side and North Clayton County and Forest Park. We had him coming up. DeKalb County had him coming in off of Claridian in Columbia or turning off of Memorial towards the city at Columbia. They have a camera there. And lo and behold, we, we did some research. We started tracking this vehicle. We found him. And lo and behold, we we get did some research, we started tracking his vehicle, we found him. And we were able to reunite him. It was an elderly gentleman. Reunite him with his daughter. Within, well, less than twenty-four hours. I don't know the exact time of. Huge success rate. The investigative pool for us, we've got proven. We we've been able to use Decatur. We've been able to use Clarkson. We've been able to use the cap counting system to find suspects, identify potential suspects, do more legwork. Just because we track someone, that's not enough alone. There's still the investigative side. There's still the confirmation before taking action. And that's a big key. And I know that's a concern, but the hit alone is not. We would have to locate, have our eyes on the vehicle, run the vehicle, get the confirmation through G C I C, which is Georgia Crime Information Center. Which is tied to the National Crime Information Center before taking action. So as Robert stated, we're kind of one of a very small hole in DeKalb County. But at the same time, that hole is, we need to fill that hole. If you, for example, if you guys have been to Decatur, you've driven past one of these cameras. And I bet you, you haven't even realized it. They blend in or you look at it and you're like, what is that pole there? You know, where I live, they just deployed and I was happier than you know what? Because I know the resources, it's it's a force multiplier, resource multiplier for our investigative division as well as our office. So the officers in the field can start searches. That's how the shambly child abduction was solved. Was an road slick-sleeve officer started searching, started getting hits. Added more people in the investigation than where we reunited that child. That was a national range. So.
So I have some questions about the technology. Thanks, Chief. The value of the the value proposition, I don't have any questions about it. It's more about the technology. So you you know, right now we live in the age of A I. And there's a lot of things that we don't have to to do as people. Is A I incorporated into this? And what I mean by that is we had a case a few months ago, I don't remember how long ago, where there was a certain vehicle driving around the city doing, you know, not good stuff. If I wanted to figure out how many times a certain vehicle was captured coming in and out of the city. Is that something that we'd be able to do through that system?
Yeah. So what you do is you can put you can put a vehicle description, the tag, and then it'll it'll show you the different pictures, the different times, where they are. And then there's an insights section within the website where you can run reports and kind of dig into the into the data. So A I and predictive learning is built in as sort of a foundation of the technology, just like in lots of technologies these days. So it will eventually allow us to do, you know, high-speed chase prediction on which way we think a vehicle is going to go. That's the thing, based on knowing where that vehicle has been. Based on, you know, thirty days at a time. So and the longer that we have our cameras out there, the more predictive learning there is. That is a big part of the vehicle description signature that we have. Is that more vehicles that we see? I mean, the more blue Hondas that we see. We absolutely know what a blue Honda looks like. We know the measurements of the bumper. We know exactly where the tag is. We know that, you know, BMW has a brand-new model and we've got that information into the system. So it's a combination of machine learning. It's also a combination of lookup tables. To know that the GMC pickup truck as a bumper is two-point-seven feet off the ground versus a Toyota pickup truck, things like that. So lots of intelligence built into.
Okay. So and you know, the the final question that I really have for this is the analogy I'm making is the it that comes to me immediately is, you know, is it analogous to like systems monitoring where, you know, if something happens, for example, is, you know, a server that usually receives three hundred hits an hour, starts getting nine hundred hits an hour. Is there, and it is predictive, is there some threshold that you set? For example, you know, something has happened in an area where other things have happened. And this vehicle has been there, you know, five times. Is that capability there? Or are we talking something more manual than that?
That that fall.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the data, the reports are restricted to law enforcement. We want to get down to the vehicle itself, the data collected, everything else. That is restricted to law enforcement. Yeah, I can run reports and it is very useful and you brought up a good example. We set those brain.
No, that that was the question.
That is, I'll send on the agency, the administrator of the system. We can set the parameters. We can restrict them. If we see an uptick, we can expand them. But on face value, if we don't set them, they're not set.
No, we're not. We're not setting. And 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 the and the assumption is, so one of the questions that comes up is well, there's all these cars driving by all these cameras and then there's privacy issues and all that stuff. All of the agencies that we work with are so busy trying to keep up with what they're doing and staying focused on community safety and things like that. They don't really jump into the system until there's really a need to. I have I have a vehicle description. I'm investigating the burglary. I have someone I'm looking for. I know their last address. I know their license plate number. Let's start looking around. Where where are they? So just because you drive by a flock camera doesn't put you in jeopardy of the law.
No, no, but I guess, you know, the, you know, I don't know if you have statistics on this. But, you know, a city like Decatur, let's just say, how many alerts might they receive in a day?
From talking to Chief Richards at Decatur, leading into this conversation. It's not consistent, but it's not overwhelming.
Okay.
And I think you hit on it, that ninety-nine point nine percent of vehicles and citizens traveling through Georgia, don't have anything to worry about. It's it's the less than one percent that are on the database that are driving through. They may, speaking from experience at Clarkson, we would go about a single hit. Then all of a sudden, we may get one weeks again. Then we may have a hot tie. But that helps us kind of predict, we can start seeing patterns of why is a criminal element coming in and what's bringing them in? That's the way I was approaching it is what's new that's bringing them in, but it's sporadic. I mean, it's not overwhelming.
That was the idea that I was coming from is what is, you know, are you going to have to allocate someone to preage all these alerts, that kind of.
Or via phone app, live live time on a computer. The reality is if we're getting, we're chasing. And besides that, it's patrol, C I D and administration, if we can have those alerts coming in. And then we can direct as needed, if needed, but it's not a full-time application. Single agent aware of, unless they have a real prime center. Or keeping those and broadcasting, hey, we just had this hit at this intersection at this camera going this direction. Doesn't happen that way.
Doctor, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any more?
I do. So. Do you sell any free data?
No, we don't.
Do you give it away?
No, we don't. So there are other companies in this space. And one of the things they'll say is, well, we keep the data forever. Well, they keep it as long as they can sell it and make money.
Right.
We don't do that.
Okay.
We're not in partnership with companies that verify insurance coverage. There are lots of companies that would love for us to do that. We don't help recover recovery companies buying vehicles that haven't paid their car net in four months. We don't do those types of things. So.
And so you exist based on subscriber fees?
That's correct.
Okay.
Paid by law enforcement agencies and also through our community safety and commercial accounts, things like that.
Okay.
Then what did we say the two-year cost was?
Sixty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thanks.
And that would be a recurring every year cost, right?
Yeah, if we have to. That we have allocated resources within the capital program, we feel the need to move, continue moving forward with with the program. It would be a recurring subscription fee on an annual basis, which could be subject to increase or decrease based on the amount of cameras installed within the city.
About sixty-three two fifty for two years.
Or ten cameras.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which includes the install fees.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So three thousand, essentially each camera is a three thousand dollar annual subscription.
I got you. Yep.
Does the subscription fee increase or decrease per camera?
I've been for the life of the contract, which would be for two years.
So at the end of the contract, the price of the monitoring can go up?
It could go up and could stay the same. We had a we had a price increase this time last year, but that was the first one we'd had in three or four years. So we didn't expect it to go up, the normal cost of doing business, but two-year contract would lock you in for those for the for those two years. And that includes all the maintenance and all that stuff. You don't actually take title to the equipment through the subscription model. We maintain title through the equipment and if something goes wrong with it, we either fix it or replace it, just like we talked about earlier in the discussion.
If I may, can I ask Chief? What what do you, in a sentence, what do you think, what is the number one benefit of this of this system to Avondale?
It is a force multiplier. It puts more eyes out there that we can utilize, helping better crime, protect crime.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Robert. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we will be voting on this next time?
Yes, consideration of the contract will be at the next regular.
Okay. Everybody got that?
All right, item number four, projects update. Yes, I just wanted to provide a quick update on capital, ongoing capital projects for the board, especially the two newest commissioners. I have tried my best to provide them with background and context for all of the decisions that we've been making over the last several years. So I think they're they're pretty up to speed. But, you know, we we move forward with three new stormwater projects close to the year's end. Dunwick Dunwick Drive Phase One is now complete. If y'all recall, that included the lining of pipe and a catch basin replacement. The engineering design and survey for Phase Two, which will contain the regenerative stormwater approaches to the creek and reinforcement of the outfalls set to be completed by March. The Kensington Project, the concept plan has been completed to add catch basins, curb inlets and underground infrastructure to stop flooding that's occurring in multiple resident backyards. Engineering design and survey should be complete for this project by March as well, with construction to begin later this year. The, also, the concept plan for the Washington Pine Stormwater Issue was completed in twenty twenty-three. That concept was a little more complex, if y'all recall. It it called for the replacement of a collapsed pipe leading to the Washington and Pine intersection. The addition of catch basins and upstream underground gray infrastructure to reduce flooding and increase the level of service. That work is that survey work is is now completed. The city is working with both MARTA and C S X to permit the project to ensure we can tie into their pipes before the engineered design can be completed. And then Northwoods, this is for the homers.